Call to order this meeting, please rise and join Alderman Parker in prayer and pledge, please.
Thank you, Father, for this day. We thank you for your many blessings and all the blessings yet to come. We ask you to look over the meeting here tonight, that we conduct it with a benefit in citizens of Long Beach, to also recognize our first responders and our military, their families, and bless them. I ask you to bless all the employees of the city and the town, for it is Jesus Christ's name and for his sake. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and law.
All right, thank you all for joining us. This is the recessed meeting from our end of June due to yesterday being the Fourth of July holiday. Going to call our to order. Patrick?
Here.
Mr. McGooey?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. McCaffrey?
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
And Mr. Parker?
Present.
Seeing that we have a quorum, all right. Let's see, we have no announcements, proclamations, or presentations tonight. Do I have any amendments to the municipal docket? I have one here I'd like to get added. This is an invoice that everybody has a copy of. This needs to be this is sales tax that was received that needs to be sent into the state. So I just need a motion to have this added.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that will be added to the docket there. So next we're going to approve minutes. Mayor and Board of Aldermen, June 20th, 2023, regular?
Move.
Have a motion and several seconds. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on. Planning and Development Commission, June 22nd, 2023, regular?
I move.
Second.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, all right. Approved docket of claims, number 070423?
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Just want to make one note in here that the on page two, I believe it is, yes, to the last item for the fireworks. That is that is the city paying. We received a grant thanks to Richard Bennett on this. So any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, under new unfinished business, excuse me, Alderman Parker, speed limits.
Yes, I got with the board and we were taking a look at some of the speed limits on some of our roads. And the ones that we wanted to change some off of were the 30 miles an hour to 25. East Ole Pass Road, McCon, Nicholson, North and South, Gates Avenue, North, Allen Road from the school all the way to the McCon, no, it's all the way to the city. No, Allen Road to the end of it. And then Cleveland South and Lower Alexander Road. These are all ones that we wanted to pass for residential and also for golf carts, too. So that's my motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, second one, purchase and sales agreement, stage line, Mobile Stage, Inc. We-
We've got a message and a dialogue started with Mr. Tony, I'm not going to be embarrassed, Ford in Quebec, who is the agent on this deal. He is going to provide, we have not yet through their legal department, an amended contract which takes out the indemnity and arbitration language that we could not enter into by the city. We don't have the amended contract yet, but I got a message back from him today that it's on the way.
Okay, perfect. Then can I get a motion to table it?
Second.
Okay. I got a motion to table this, waiting on the updated contract due to the fact that this company is from Canada. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll table that to next. Water bill issue, Mr. Randy and Rebecca Newlin. I got a copy of the plans here. Is this, is this, all right. Have you guys, has anybody, okay. This is the one that we, this is not it?
It's not it.
Got two tabs, right?
Yes.
Yes.
I thought I had this as well.
All right, I'm sorry, I don't have it. I have a picture of it.
I have, went by there and looked at everything, looked at the plans, got with Mike, and to me, it's an apartment, my personal opinion.
Agreed.
So we need a motion to take no action on it. That's my motion.
I will second that.
And can you repeat your motion again? I'm sorry.
Actually, my motion is to take no action on it.
Okay.
I have a, when I went by there and looked, and it's got two power meters, it's got the flying show, a full kitchen, full bathroom. So to me, it's an apartment. So that's my motion.
Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right. No action taken on number three. Under new business, support of boys and girls state delegates. Ms. Margaret Levens and Mr. Ray, can you pronounce your last name for me, sir?
Shaveri.
Shaveri. I don't want, I didn't want to destroy it. I apologize.
Thank you.
If you guys will come on up to the microphone there and explain to us what you have, please.
Well, first of all, I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Ray Shaveri, and I am the project manager for American Legion Post 1995 Boy State Program. Along with me is, you know well, is Margaret Levens. She is the Secretary Treasurer of Post 1995 Auxiliary and Project Manager for Magnolia Girls State. And last but not least, standing with us are the 2023 Boy State and Girls State Delegates for Long Beach High School.
All right.
I'd like to start by introducing Mr. Jared Smith and Mr. Luke Delaney. They did very well up in Oxford this year, served on several committees, a couple of involvements with the mock trial, learned a lot about government, which I'll be getting into lately.
Margaret?
Arlene Nguyen. Chloe Gordon. And Arlene ran for mayor.
Or her.
While she was at Girls State.
Awesome.
So the purpose of us being here is, number one, to thank the Board of Aldermen for the support you have shown and committed to us for this year's Boys and Girls State Programs. Through your generosity, these young men and young women participated in a very comprehensive government and leadership program. It lasted a week whereby the systems of local, county, and state governments were learned and put into practice. Their gains of knowledge of government functions were sharpened by hearing from some of Mississippi's top elected officials who came by to visit and other notable leaders. And so these young men and women learned more about themselves, their capabilities, and ultimately how to be a strong leader. These learned skills will not only serve them in their senior year, but will also serve them well into their futures. However, ultimately, it is through the Boy State and Girls State Program that our confidence is that they will grow to be an example of what an informed and involved citizenry should be, thereby enabling them to be an asset to their community. And to this, these delegates, to their parents, and to the American Legion, we express our sincere gratitude.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Can I come up here for a picture, if you don't mind?
Can you get them?
Yeah, I'll go this way.
Okay.
You want to talk?
What's this guy?
Crying?
No.
Courtney, hold on. Mayor Proton, get in. He was looking for contact.
You good? Go get the middle.
One, two, three.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to ask you for it later.
All right.
Okay.
I would like to say one thing.
Go ahead.
I'd like to say congratulations also. And, you know, it's never too late to learn anything. I'd love to sit down with y'all and learn about some of the ideas that y'all came back with and what our future leaders have to say about what they learned. So I'll get with Margaret and some of the other Aldermen if you'd like to join, but I'd like to hear what y'all all went through, what you learned, and see if we can learn some new tricks. So, thank you and congratulations.
Ms. Johnson, we are having a get together on August the 4th at the Senior Citizen, and that's going to be the American Legion Auxiliary, the American Legion's installation. And most of the Boys and Girls States will be there, and there'll be plenty of opportunity then. But we'll be glad to meet with you before then if we need to.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, next up, contract addendum with Tumbleweed Press with Ms. Denise at the library. Ms. Denise, do you need to speak on that, or this is just some housekeeping?
Housekeeping.
Got it.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I believe you'll have, you have, in reading this, you have one more outstanding?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, perfect. All right, moving on. Administration adjustment request, right away purchased, Vicki Price. Kind of elaborating on this. This is the property acquisition that we're, we've been working with on the intersection of Commission and Klondike. If in the packet, it spoke about the offer was made to the property owner in purchasing the needed property to expand. In some of their prices, they did go out to vendors and check the pricing and came back with a counteroffer of just about $9,293. And that was with the asphalt fencing and gate. So-
Come over.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Signage at Long Beach Harbor and Jeff Davis, discussion, Alderman Brown.
Just the new signage that's going up, I'd like to, I personally like to send it back to our architect and let him give us some different color options on the lettering. That's my motion.
Second.
Have a motion to send it back to discuss with, or send it back to Christian?
Discuss with Christian.
With Christian Prius.
The mayor's office probably will contact with him.
Okay.
See if he can give us some better, different options on the color, because there's been a lot of complaints. And plus, I went down there myself, and it is different times of the day. You can't really see the-
On the lettering itself.
On the lettering itself.
And we're talking for all signage?
See what he, I mean, let's-
I think so. I think if we're going to change one, we-
I just wanted to make sure when, okay.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Kenny, will you call it?
All right.
We need more of a contrast.
There is on certain times of day, and I mean, it's, you know, everybody goes 45 down there, so.
Well, I mean, in the past five minutes, they all slowed down by five miles an hour. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, any more discussion? All right, seeing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next, Pineville Road and Beetline Road West, discussion, Alderman Brown again.
On the phone.
You're busy.
David, I know we had talked about when we was doing our asphalt overlays, we was go put that area on hold until we seen what we was go do with the development. I know y'all have been in touch with the developer, but I think we need to start, my personal opinion, we need to start making some type of improvement or design for expanding, widening Pineville Road from Beetline to at least A Avenue. If you get behind an 18-wheeler, there's about six inches between the center line and that truck. And I know the police department, I know the fire department at one time had a collision with mirrors and everything, and I don't know chief of the department, y'all, I think there's-
Tires get damaged running off the road is such a trouble.
And then we have to call Mike and them out there. I have to call them probably once a month to go and fill the sides, all the ruts. My thing is, we getting ready to have 350 houses out there. Not today, but that's coming. So if it's the pleasure of the board or whatever, would y'all-
I'll second that.
Say just, let's, I guess, put together a preliminary and bring us something to where maybe we can look at it.
Okay.
Is that correct? Am I right?
So your motion, just to clarify, is to-
Get David to bring us maybe a preliminary plan.
Start looking at widening Pineville Road from Beetline. You want to go all the way to A Avenue?
I've seen what David, if we need to go all the way to the city limits, to Espy or A Avenue. That's where, he's the engineer, let him-
Okay. No, I just, I wanted to clarify for that. Okay. So I have a, now, you, for my clarity, are you talking about adding, adding that for this round of paving as well?
First of all, we got to get a idea of what we're looking at, and then-
Okay, so where's-
We need to see what money we looking at and where we-
Okay, so we're not just necessarily putting it to the paving aspect?
No, no, no.
Okay, just making sure.
I think we need to start looking.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right. Request to reimburse Baseball League for Babe Ruth Insurance. Bob, this is the same thing we did last year. Is this correct? I just want clarity. And then I, looking at, looking at it, the total quote there was 3841, correct? Okay, all right.
I'll make the motion.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion?
We did this last year, I remember that, but have any of the other leagues asked for assistance?
They don't require it, just Babe Ruth. As of right now, insurance softball, whichever, whether they stay with ASA or move to a different organization, they may require it in the future. Babe Ruth did this a couple of years ago, started charging the leagues extra insurance so that when we travel to do our state and regional tournaments, we're not covered under our umbrella for the city insurance. We've been working with Tom over the last year to try to rectify that situation. And according to him, some of their material in there, we can't cover with the amounts and stuff. So we stuck with their bill at the end of the year. It's basically, they're making more money. Babe Ruth is requiring every league to carry their insurance at the end of the year for travel purposes.
Okay, any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, item number seven, fee waiver request rec center for American Legion?
I move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, item number seven, fee waiver request rec center for American Legion?
I move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Beat me to the punch.
Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Mayor's Department. I just, real quick, I want to commend, and I know we're going to be talking about it a little bit more, who all was involved. Courtney and Sawyer and the Fire Department and Police Department. It was a great event this weekend with the Fourth of July Festival or Jubilee, excuse me, I don't want to use the wrong wordage. The fireworks were great. I just want to commend you guys for, for that hard work. I was just giving a memo that the baby box was delivered to the Fire Department and will be yesterday. And we'll be working on a scheduled date on that for-
What construction company can come in and start looking at it?
Perfect, perfect. And then just want to make it aware that, you know, there is still construction going on along Railroad Street and with the improvement of Pineville and Railroad. So just to keep an eye out for upcoming flagmen or lane closures, but the road will not be closed at this point in time. And that's all I have. Personnel, Fire Department, one retirement, one promotion, and one step increase.
Two-step.
Oh, sorry, two-step increases.
Move and tell you, guy retiring, we appreciate his time while he was here.
Yes.
That was Lieutenant Brad McGill. He spent a few years in Pass and came over to Long Beach and spent the rest of his career here and did a great job with Governor Miss's expertise.
Yep.
And have to try to fill those shoes.
Yeah. Okay, have a motion and do I have a second?
Yeah, you have a second.
All right, any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. City Clerk, Budget Amendment, FY 2023, Police Department.
I move, second.
All right, motion and a second. This was moving the, is it COVID money? Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, now, Fire Department.
Just was going to make a quick comment about Station 3. It looks like they have the slab finished, and they have drilled and epoxied the rebar in, ready for block. I saw where they dumped masonry sand out there, but the block are not on the project yet, but I'm sure-
Not far behind. That's, that's good news. That's good news. Awesome. Anything else? Nope, thank you, sir. All right, Police Department, personnel issues?
All right. We kind of briefly discussed this during our last work session when we had our mid-year budget work session. Since then, I've had several more resignations with no applications, and they went to other departments. And we're at a critical level now. And what I'm asking is that we look at going ahead and doing a $5,000 pay increase to get our starting salary to $43,000, to bring a, where we're back in the ballgame. We're, start at 38 right now. Bay St. Louis is at 44.4, DeIvile's 46, and jumps up to 49 at 12 months. County and Waveland are 41 to 49 through there. The only one we're hiring currently is Pass, and we're like $200 higher than them. If we could do it now, it would cost nothing. The money's in our budget. The total cost right now would be $42,204, and we just replace that $38,000 of COVID money. And I have, from all my open positions, plenty of money in there. And for the next years, what I had offered is to freeze three positions, which is $186,426. So we see where we're financially, and if I need those positions, I would come back to y'all to lease those positions as needed.
Billy, reiterate, where would that bring us?
$43,000.
To 43.
And 38.
So we're still considerably lower than a lot of other departments.
When, when did you say you're freezing the three?
Now.
Now?
Yeah, from now until-
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the pay increase.
Second.
We have to keep officers in Long Beach.
Hang on, let me just get a motion and a second, and then we can have discussion. So I have a motion-
And a second.
On the table with a second to, for a $5,000 increase at this point in time. It's a, it's a net increase to our budget of zero, freezing three positions upon approval. And is that, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And this would be for just active policemen?
Is all sworn, just sworn personnel?
Sworn personnel, so duty officers.
Secretaries or support staff.
Pete?
Yeah, further discussion, Billy, candidly, I'm afraid, what I'm going to ask you, do you think that's enough to make a difference?
Well, I'm not, you know, if everybody else raises theirs in their budget this year, then, you know, then we'll have to look at it next year. That's what happened. Y'all graciously did this two years ago.
And then every other city-
Every department followed suit, yeah.
The problem was, we didn't do it for like 15 years before that. Right, y'all brought us back in the ballgame, but at the same time-
Yeah, for about six weeks.
Everybody else raised theirs at the same time. So-
I'll tell you-
My hope with this is, we've, we've met in coming up with some other stuff to help with retention, but we got to get them in the door.
Does that admin as well?
More now.
It's all sworn off.
All 26 employees. The problem with that is-
The budget.
Overlapping.
Is, there's no real difference. I mean, our lieutenants make less than $2,000 more than a patrolman who make $2,000 less than a captain. So if you give them all five, they're going to be making more than an assistant chief.
Got you.
Okay.
I'm just concerned it's not enough. That's-
Well, this is a start, a start here. And then if we, chief, if you think, if that's not enough, because I just, we'll go to the next one also. Talking to the Chief of Fire, they're about $2,000 lower than a city, all the cities on the coast.
Understand that, and I, and I have empathy for that, too, but I don't think Griff's elevating people down.
No, 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 I don't mean that. I'm just saying.
Yes, I don't want, I'd hate to see this start a problem on, on the Fire Department.
Yeah.
We can go ahead, and my opinion is, is he's asking tonight, and I think we go vote on it here. And then come our budget work section, we will talk about the Fire Department and whatever we need to.
I think so.
But I feel like we're in a crisis right now with the Police Department.
Right. Something has to be done now.
I follow that reasoning, too.
Okay.
Okay, any more discussion?
Aye.
Seeing none, call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
This will be effective immediately, next pay period?
Retro to the first.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Wait, what was that?
Throwback to this-
July 1st.
July 1st. It'll be next check.
I thought you said January. Okay.
That's all we can do.
Advertise tomorrow for our sheet, our hire sheet.
All right.
I hope it works, chief.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Yep.
All right, moving on, engineering, Gateway and Streetscape Professional Services. David has this, David, am I correct, this is for the, the next grant that we signed last meeting? This is moving forward?
The ultimate build out of the Gateway project, yes, sir.
Got you. This is, now, in Christian Prius's original thing, this is phase two of, of that original breakdown? Do you remember offhand?
I'm not sure that I know his phases.
Because I know we changed it so many times.
Yeah, I don't know that I know his phases enough. I just know it's all for that $4.3 million grant, I believe, so.
Got it. Got it, got it. All right, I have a motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, B, Amendment to the Southeast Bulkhead Shore Protection Overstreet and Associates.
Come on in.
Have a motion.
Discussion, second.
Second with discussion.
Can you elaborate a little bit on this?
Yeah, yes, sir. The, the test pile, which is the additional test pile that we need, that was cast June 16th. It's a 28-day, a one-month cure time, so I anticipate they're gonna be mid-July coming out there, ready to install that test pile. This amendment is for the additional geotechnical services that we're gonna need to make sure that that test pile, that we get...
To the right bloodline.
Correct recommendations and correct installation procedure and everything on that test pile. We talked about it at a previous meeting.
We did.
I, I just didn't have it all together for the, for the meeting at the end of June.
Okay.
Okay, so with that, I, it, just for clarification on the video and to the public, this is the continuation, you may not see actual pilings going in down at the harbor right now.
That's right.
But we've been waiting on, because the first two pilings did not pass the, the test, we had to go out and secure or recommend, get two more pilings, or one more piling for an upcoming test...
That's right.
Sometime in July. So, because you don't see tractors and, and men down there moving, does not mean that construction on the harbor has not begun.
That's right.
Okay. And I just wanted to make sure that was repeated, and, and so that we had clarif, clarification on that, so. All right, I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, C, Award Bid for North Jeff Davis Extension, Top to Bottom Construction.
Come on in.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Roll call. Patrick?
Aye.
Pete?
Yes.
Mikey?
Yes.
Timmy? Angie?
Nay.
Nay? And Bernie?
Aye.
All right, all right, motion carries. All right, moving on. Under D, Asphalt Paving, Term Bid Price Increase. David, this is under you, or wouldn't that be under, is that usually under Joe? And I know you guys kind of blend.
Joe often handles the, the bidding process. He asked if I could, could help with this. Since I had talked with the contractor, we were trying to line him up to start doing some of our 2023 paving, and he basically said, "Look, I, I can't continue to work for these prices with what's happened in the, in the asphalt industry over the last few months." And so that's how we got to this point where he offered and requested a letter adjusting his prices.
So, for lack of knowledge, is this something that happens a lot? I mean, I know we're in different times at this point, is, is the word that's used.
Um, I, I don't often do a lot of term bids, you know, but, but I think in, in the case that we've got, we've bid a project, I think he took bids for it in 2022. Now, we're a year later, and the world is, is probably quite a bit different than when he, he did his term bid in 2022, the contractor did. I think the, the off, the options here are just cancel it all and rebid it, or if we can work with him to do this, if it's even legal to do this.
My issue with it is if we bid something out, and then you change your price halfway through, would have even won the bid to begin with? You know, it, it almost seems unfair to...
That's, this is why I'm asking.
Could go ahead and increase the price when somebody else could have beat them out. Correct. He could have lost the bid and the other person, it could have been cheaper.
That's a good legal question.
I will, I will offer that I did discuss this issue with multiple paving contractors, and everybody that told me, you know, that I tried to play as close to the chest as I could, and, and everyone that I talked to about pricing was more than this, so we can go out on the street and term bid it, we'll probably see a price higher than this.
Legal-wise, where do we stand?
I, I think it sets a bad precedent to allow a, a change this big in a bid to, and it's probably a better practice, best business practice to rebid it. Even though you know what you're gonna get are gonna be prices similar to what he's asking for, it's better to let everyone have an even playing field than just to change his bid from over a year ago.
I'll take a motion and we'll take legal's advice and rebid.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to rebid the asphalt paving. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, Pineville Railroad Intersection Improvements, David?
Yeah, the, the...
I'm sorry.
It's a long letter, I apologize. Probably the short answer is, we've been talking about making modifications at that intersection, converting it to a roundabout. All of that roundabout discussion happened after we had designed and bid the intersection improvements for the sewer project that's currently underway. We could probably save some money if we didn't make the modifications that are currently bid, currently in our contract. We could get rid of those traffic signals that are currently in a, in a, it's functioning as a stop intersection anyways. We could take those traffic signals down, put them in Public Works inventory, and save a fair amount of money, we believe, on our current construction project just by converting that whole thing to a stop intersection. That's probably the cheapest way to set us up for the roundabout improvements later.
David, can we have flashing stop, like the stoplights or stop signs like we have at...
We do have them up there.
No, 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 I'm talking about after the fact, if we're taking everything down, am I right? You're talking about taking the flashing red lights down?
Absolutely.
Can we put up the flashing stop signs? Is that in?
And we, we, we have them there.
No, okay, but I mean, they go state for it.
No. You're wrong.
One point in time, we had them there.
There would...
Five point.
That's at five point.
Right. You're not, you're not at seal and...
No, 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 I'm, I, that I'm...
That's my question, it, I mean...
It absolutely will meet, you know, code requirements. Obviously, there might be a period of adjustment required for the drivers, just observe, we're gonna put up LED flashing stop signs, which I think...
That's what I'm asking.
It's intended for them to be flashing to gain that visibility back, but all that, those aerial lights would go away and they'd be sign-mounted flashing LED signs.
Clean it up, it's gonna look nice, clean it up.
Yes, sir. And, and I have, while we're talking on this, I know me and the mayor here have
talked on a few items. That asphalt, I mean, we're sitting at the, the entrance to Jeff Davis at Railroad Street, all right? And we're worried about getting our main street down here fixed, but that really looks bad there. Is, is, what, is that, is the contract come all the way there on asphalt, so on and so forth?
Uh, the, the current contract that we're under construction for, for the sewer project will not come that far, but, but, but MDOT does have funding for improvements at that intersection, and, and that, they've given it to you, and you guys have awarded it to Overstreet, and we're working on getting a contract in front of you guys to design those improvements. So, that intersection...
Right.
Railroad and Jeff Davis will be improved.
Because it's a shame that we are doing our gateway, and people come off the interstate, and they, if they're coming down Railroad Street, and then they get right here, because that really does not look good right now, I don't care, that's my personal opinion.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
So, I have a, can I get a motion?
Motion.
And a second.
Second.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. David, while we're on you, one small item that you and I discussed, I'd like to just bring up, if it's okay with the board, discussion on the stop bar at 28th Street? If you could tell everybody what we, what, in speaking with the school?
Absolutely. Shane Rutledge, I think, reached out to Donald and said, "Man, I'm, I'm having some difficulties with the stop bar buses turning west onto 28th Street at Klondike and 28th. When people pull past that stop bar facing east, it just makes it very difficult for that, those school buses to make that turn and head west on 28th Street. We found that we could move that stop bar back, I believe, 10 feet and still meet every code that we can find, so we, I think that would be a good first place to start, that should be a fairly cheap thing to do."
So, basically, instead of just asking Joe to do it, I wanted to bring it up tonight with, with David and get the board's blessing to do that.
Absolutely.
So, um...
I'll make the motion.
You have a mo, I have a motion?
Move it back 10 feet.
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank y'all. Moving on, Public Works.
We're good.
You're good, sir, thank you. Bob, Paul?
We're good, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Building Department is out on vacation visiting Mickey Mouse. All right, Harbor, Mr. David? You're good. All right. All right, Ms. Courtney, Community Affairs, Long Beach Art Competition.
Yes, so I wanted to do a Long Beach art competition among the schools, and there'll be two winners for each age bracket, so five to nine, and then 10 to 18. And then, the plan is, the winner would be hung up in City Hall for a whole year.
Okay.
Something positive for the community.
You need a, they need a motion on that? Second? Absolutely.
Any, any discussion?
I would just like to, once again, thank you for what you participated in this past weekend. I was not in town, but I heard nothing but good reviews from everybody.
Yes, yes, very good.
Andy Van...
All right, I have a...
Yeah, two weeks.
Yeah, in two weeks, we have the Christmas in July.
Right.
And then, all right, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Derelict Properties, none. Mr. City Attorney?
No, sir, nothing.
Okay, before we adjourn, I just want to remind everybody, finishing out this week, Fourth of July week, we do have finally First Friday returning, the band is Old School, they were our rainout from May, May, so, I hope to see everybody out there with that. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion, several seconds, and some grumbling from Alderman Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're adjourned.